Hey guys, welcome. Just getting attendance here.
I'm kind of mad I didn't choose this as my ism. I didn't see this one, so I chose the other ism, but this ism looks better.
It is got, it's got a lot in it too, because it's got eugenics in it and all kinds of interesting stuff, so.
Yeah, this whole ism has a lot of things that never really go well.
It's the ideologies have been, that have been born out of this have been roundly condemned, I guess you could say.
And I think, yeah, the main problem of mainly this and mainly the whole idea of eugenics is what do you consider fit? It's all about, it's basically whatever's fit is whatever you want it to be, and when it's that, a lot of bad things can happen.
Well, and it's just, it's treating, it's treating human beings like livestock, you know, it's like.
Yeah.
You don't have rights.
It's, yeah, it's just straight back to like slavery ideals.
Yeah. Ailey, what's up?
Do we need our mics on? Or sorry, videos on?
Oh, no, you don't have to on a, on a weekend zoom session. Um, I'll put mine on so you guys can see me, but you don't have to put yours on. Alright.
So. GMEs, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, what were you gonna say?
I was saying GME's been pretty interesting last couple of days. It bumped back.
Oh, really? You're obsessed?
Oh, we were talking in class. It stagnated to three hundred and twelve over the weekend. Dogecoin went back up to four cents.
Ooh, well, hey, I mean, you've quadrupled your money if you bought it when it was a cent, so.
It was like less than a cent then, it was like zero point zero zero four cents.
It was at three forty-nine in class, and then at, by the end of class, it was at like two seventy, and then it went back up to like three fifty, and now it's down to two hundred again.
You're talking about a GameStop?
Or sorry, yeah, it's, it's actually three twenty-five now, sorry. So yeah, it's but hovered then, but it's been up and down like crazy, nonstop.
Monday's gonna be insane for GME though. It's just gonna, I honestly don't know how that will go.
Well, are they allowing, uh, on the, on the platforms, are they allowing people to buy it like just straight up?
Yeah, but apparently you can only buy one at a time on Robinhood.
Right, yeah, you can't buy like in chunks. Uh, it slows it down some, but, uh, people are buying it on the New York Stock Exchange too, they're.
Yeah, the thing is, what I've also noticed is, um, oh, you know those like news headlines saying that, oh, Citron has pulled down, Melvin Capital has closed their short positions? They are not legally liable to tell you that they shut it. Like, they don't have to tell you the truth, so it's really just a tactic to make people think that this is the highest it goes, so that they'll sell. And then they can get back into a favorable short position. However, it's still a hundred and thirteen percent short on GameStop stock. What, because what they know is that if they do close their stock positions, it will set, they have to buy back the stock, which will cause it to go up even more.
Yeah, but I mean, what, what goes up come, must come down at some point, um.
Yeah, people know this, they're just trying to see how far it can go.
The question is, when is that point? Because you always want it to be at the point where it actually is coming down.
Yeah, because the thing is, the definition of like bubbles necessarily just means deviation from normal. Because I think technically to some marketers, there can technically be a bubble that never pops.
Yeah.
By definition, it's just, we don't know how long bubbles last.
Right, I mean, you know, like some very valuable companies are going to be, they're gonna maintain their value, obviously, like Apple is gonna maintain its value just because of the, the value.
And people are now blaming, now people are gone on, like, they've gone in the defensive saying that, oh, they're gonna crash the economy with this, which I find pretty funny that, to think that they think that redditors can crash the entire US economy.
Yeah, no.
There's obviously a lot of other mistakes that went in before this.
They're just sticking it to the man, man.
And also, that short squeeze was gonna happen at one point or another, because when you have that over a hundred percent short on a stock, those people can't buy back stocks at the normal price because they're all bought up, so that drives the price up. Because the demand outruns the supply on those stocks, and it would have just automatically squeezed itself.
Alright, we are gonna get started though. Uh, we could talk stocks forever, but we've gotta, we've gotta get on to what we're here for. So, um, we are starting today with social Darwinism. Uh, this was already, somebody already did this in fourth period, um, but, uh, we never, I don't, I don't think anybody picked it in sixth, um, so I'm just double checking my list here. Get fully see on the list here. Alright, but this is a, um, philosophy, I think Max did this, and Max is here, so Max, if you want to, uh, jump in and comment, feel free, um, but, uh, this guy right here, Herbert Spencer, um, uh, basically said, well, you know, the whole law of the jungle, survival of the fittest thing that, you know, Darwin came up with, why don't we look at human society and see if it would apply to us too, you know? We're animals too, sort of thing. So, um, he basically comes up with this philosophy where he says, you know, in human society, the, the fittest rise to the top, and those that are weak go to the bottom, and that's the natural order of things. And, um, this was something that capitalists over in America were looking for. They needed some way to justify their enormous wealth, uh, because there was that anger among the poor, and there were people who were like, you know, this is so unfair, how did, how come they have so much money when we're, we barely can eat, you know, kind of stuff? And so they're, they're like, you know, looking for a way to justify things, and, um, you know, Herbert Spencer, uh, you know, played into some other theorists, uh, in Europe at the time. Thomas Malthus had predicted that someday there would be this catastrophe where the population would outrun the food supply, uh, and there would be fighting over food and, and resources and, and things would end badly, um, and that the, the population would be kept at a certain level uh, with the, um, you know, with this catastrophe, uh, and, uh, you know, of war, famine, etc. And, um, then you had, uh, Francis Galton, who basically added racial, um, kind of overtones to it, as well as a movement which he was a part of, which, um, is going to actually be around all the way through kind of the nineteen twenties in a, in a big way, uh, and of course, the, um, it, it kind of plays into Nazism, so it dies out after World War Two. But it's called eugenics, and eugenics is where, um, they kind of say, well, look, uh, certain groups and certain races uh, are better fit and therefore should pass on their genetics, and weaker groups, you know, the disabled, etc., shouldn't, should, uh, not pass on their genetics. Go ahead, Brady.
So, like, I understand what eugenics is, but what were, like, what was Francis going in, what were they doing with the idea? Were they actually acting on it at all?
Um, they, they wrote about it mostly, um, and, uh, it would be groups like the Nazis that would act on it in a big way, uh, they would sterilize um, disabled people, so they would no longer be able to breed, um, and, and things like that. Yeah, Ailey, go ahead.
Well, topic of eugenics, were there any, like, specific individuals who proved that wrong, like of a certain race or group who did something out of what their group was supposedly meant to do?
Oh, sure, there are brilliant people, um, uh, from, you know, pretty much every race on the planet, uh, so the, the, kind of the concept that a certain race has a certain set of traits, and that you're kind of locked into those traits, and you know, like, you can't be smart if you're from, like, a certain, you know, race, it's just, it's absolutely ridiculous. I mean, you know, if you look at basic human biology and DNA, there's no limitation based on race, um, you know, so, um, you know, every, every race has its, has its geniuses, uh, and it's, it's brilliant people who've contributed so much, um, to the world. So, um, yeah, it, it's a bankrupt ideology, but it has this amazing sticking power, because people get so anxious over what's gonna happen, we're all, there's gonna be too many of us someday, you know, we have to keep the planet, uh, you know, not overcrowded, uh, you know, I don't know, it, it's just, go ahead, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Um, the one thing, this is, the whole idea of eugenics is, I'm afraid, starting to arise a little bit and little bit more.
There are.
Because of rise of cases of autism mainly, and that against autism, because people feel like, oh, we need to basically abort a fetus who identifies might be at high risk of autism.
Yeah, the more.
That is just.
Yeah, the more extreme eugenicists are the ones who want to kill people, uh, who are unfit. The, the less extreme ones are the ones who just want to sterilize them.
Yeah, and basically, also people pushing for sterilization of people with mental illnesses and.
Yeah, I mean, the Nazis.
Those people still exist, and I'm afraid it's starting to grow more and more.
There, there are, because as we get in, as we get more crowded as a planet, this is becoming, this, this ideology is now being revived even nowadays. Um, we talked about this in, uh, fourth block, but, um, uh, there are some, you know, stones down in Georgia where they, they, they call them the Georgia Guidestones, uh, where people have say, well, the world population should only be at five hundred million, and that's it. That's, that's a, that's a planet where everybody can enjoy, you know, the planet, um, and, and we don't overwhelm the Earth's resources. So, of course, we're way, way beyond that, but, um, but yeah, so anyway, um, now, that, that does play into the history that we were talking about, uh, because Andrew Carnegie, um, kind of the, um, the, the, of the three great titans of industry that we talked about, uh, he's the one who, um, has the most, you know, not only does he have the most direct conflict with his workers, but he also has, um, kind of an affinity almost for the downtrodden, and wants to, wants to make it so they at least have a chance. Uh, and so he writes a, um, uh, a very influential essay called The Gospel of Wealth, and essentially, the argument goes that, you, you wanna know whose fault it is that you're poor? It's not mine. I worked hard. I, I, I did what I could. I, you know, I took advantage of opportunities that came my way. Uh, I worked my way up from nothing, from where you are right now. Um, it's your fault. You let those opportunities pass you by. You didn't better yourself. You didn't work hard. You basically were lazy. I mean, and, and so essentially, that, that, that's the argument, and he's like, if anybody can become the next Andrew Carnegie, you just have to work hard. And so, it kind of works out conveniently for him though, because, you know, instead of people directing their anger at the rich, which is what they fear the most, instead, they're like saying, okay, fine, I'll work hard, I'll work harder, and, and one day I will become like you. And, and so they're always chasing that dream of becoming a millionaire. Yeah, Ethan, go ahead.
Yeah, that whole mindset has kind of sticked with us for a very, very long time, and the problem is, there's about a fifty-fifty chance that it works, or it makes the problem ten times worse, because now they're really mad at you for saying that it's their fault when they can see. Like, if a person can, like, see the effects of the economy and specifically on them, they can kind of see through the veil, because it's not really that. Um, it's like, it's not that hard to try and find reasons why this doesn't work.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this in fourth block, and it was, you know, very, you know, our conversation went along very similar lines. Yeah, go ahead, Blair.
Yeah, I think it's definitely fading away these days, like, we don't really, we're, we're kind of, uh, these days, people are pushing that that belief is like evil. Um, but I, I ca, I would agree with it. I think there is definitely, like, people that would have to work harder than others. Um, but I, I think everybody can, if, you know, they do work hard enough.
Yeah, make it, and that's, this is a debate we were not, we're not gonna solve today, like, I mean, because both sides have their points on this, uh, it, go ahead, uh, Brayden.
Actually, so with, with recent events unfolding in the stock market, I think it's becoming obvious that, like, the system is kind of rigged against those in the lower classes.
Oh, yeah.
So I, you know, I, I am one, like, huge advocate of the free market, like, I think if you work for something, you should be able to achieve it, but I think, I think this is kind of like, I, I think modern times kind of proved this wrong pretty much, because you, like, you see how, like, the rich can just manipulate everything so that they stay rich, and then the poor kind of gets screwed over, and they can't really, you know, get it, because I mean, we're, we're seeing that now, because I, I believe, uh, yeah, I, I'm not really, I don't follow it that much, but I believe, uh, that, like, everyone's already started to, like, bail out the rich guys while kind of screwing over the dudes that are driving up the prices.
Isn't that amazing how the rich people just keep getting bailed out, even though, like, if by the laws of the market, you know, survival of the fittest, you know? Uh, according to the old way of looking at things, if you are stupid, then you should pay the price, you know, and whoops, now you're poor again. Uh, so, yeah, it, it is interesting to see how that works, you know, I think that, that's one of the things that, once you're in that elite class, that is your biggest anxiety is having to, you know, go back, go back to the old, you know, hardscrabble ways that you remember before, you, you never want to go back to that, you don't want your children to go back to that, so you have to find a way to make it so you, so you stay on top and it forever, basically, and stay a part of that class, yeah. Boyer, go ahead.
To be fair, with the, the problem right now, with like Robin Hood, like, closing, closing down their trading on it for a while, uh, that's just one rich asshole who's like, I don't really want you guys to trade around, so I'm gonna pressure Robin Hood into closing down. But everybody, like, even the big, uh, like Wall Street people, a lot of people are like, pretty much unanimously in favor of, uh, the lawsuits going on, saying that Robin Hood shouldn't be able to do this. So I think pretty much everybody is, is on the side of this isn't right.
Yeah, and, and, you know, that's, that, that's, that's what America's all about, so of course, people are gonna say that, but then if it was something that threatened them personally, maybe they would, you know, manipulate the system too, uh, but, yeah, it, it, so Carnegie, to his credit, uh, as we have already discussed, uh, when we discussed him, does try to give people that road, does try to give people that pathway. He's like, okay, you know what, I, I am now mega, mega rich, uh, four hundred and eighty million dollars. And so he endows three thousand libraries across the United States, I mean, as well as, you know, some, some big institutions in the east like Carnegie Hall. But that basically makes it so any poor kid from, you know, a city, anywhere in the country, really, could, um, go to the library, check out a book for free, and better themselves, and become the next Andrew Carnegie. So to his credit, he really does put his money where his mouth is, but that's a rare exception, uh, with the, with the elite class. Uh, and for the most part, social Darwinism is just used to justify the, the system and say, you know, um, the, the rich are rich because they worked hard, they rose to the top, they have that skill, that, that, that drive, you know, etc. So if you want to be where they are, you just gotta work harder, just put your nose to the grindstone, just do it, you know? Um, and so, uh, of course, most people buy in, and like, I think it was Ethan who said, this is still ingrained in our culture, uh, but Boyer, I do see your point that it is slowly starting to fade, and people are starting to kind of, you know, take a different, um, approach. So, I mean, we could argue the, the, the benefits and the, and the, and the, the downsides to both ideologies, because they both have their issues, um, but, um, this is kind of how, um, the elite class justifies things, um, and, uh, so that takes us actually to kind of the, um, the same topic we were talking about, um, here, and, um, basically, we had a British economist, uh, back in eighteen seventeen, named David Ricardo, who wrote a book called On the Principles of Political Economy and Taxation, where he's, he basically said that in a free economy, there's something known as the iron law of wages. And he says, if, if wages rise to a certain point, then more workers are gonna join that labor pool, because they're gonna want those wages. And then, because there's more workers, it's kind of like a supply and demand thing, well, now there's more people who can do it, so that drives wages back down. And so he says that essentially, the working poor are always gonna be the working poor. There's, there's never, you're never gonna get your wages as a, as a, as a working poor person to the point where you're going to have a comfortable life, and, um, and basically, uh, you know, that is kind of demonstrated in, in how things work here, because there is no minimum wage. There is no, it's all supply and demand, it's all, you know, just based on, you know, how many people are out there who are willing to do it, versus, you know, uh, you know, how many factories are looking for people and, and are, and are competing for them, etc., in terms of wages. Uh, and so, that kind of keeps the working class in this, in this, like, never-ending position of having to work, 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 you know, and just barely making ends meet. Uh, but there is a guy by the name of Horatio Alger, who writes a series of books that all describe, um, how, you know, this person just goes from rags to riches and becomes a millionaire, and, and that dream, the kind of the Horatio Alger dream of, um, uh, rags to riches really, really has become ingrained in our society, and people will spend their whole lives working, um, just chasing that dream. Yeah, Max, go ahead.
Is the, uh, iron law of wages still like true today with the federal minimum wage and a, uh, unemployment benefits? Or has that, like, skewed it off a little bit?
It has skewed it, because, um, that, that is in a pure capitalist system with no controls, unfettered capitalist system. So obviously, if, um, there is, you know, the government is stepping in and forcing certain things, then, then obviously, the, the iron law of wages isn't going to apply as well, so, um, yeah, now we, now we have, you know, the minimum wage and other things, which kind of, uh, they, they interfere with what would normally happen in a free market there, um, and so, um, you know, the, the flip side of, um, the whole gospel of wealth argument is the, the, the exploitation of the poor. And, and this is still front and center, one of the biggest issues in America is, you know, um, uh, the, the lower class wanting more of the, of the pie, so to speak, more, they want more of a share of that enormous wealth that America has. Yeah, Jacob, go ahead.
Uh, would you say that the exploitation of the lower class will always be a part of the capitalist system?
That's one of the downsides of capitalism, is, is just that there is that inherent, um, exploitation that goes on, and it just, capitalism is the greatest engine for growth and wealth that has ever been, you know, developed. Uh, it's all based on, you know, your, your, your greed, essentially, like, you work harder, you get more, uh, you work less, you get less. You know, so it's based on, you know, so people will, people are motivated, they'll go out there, they'll do things, they'll, they'll invent things, they'll, they'll do whatever, you know? And they'll work hard, but at the same time, once they figure out how to get on top, they keep on, you know, like, competing and, and whatnot. So, I mean, I think we've learned over time that capitalism has got a lot of ugly sides, and we have to come in, the government has to kind of come in and curb the excesses of capitalism. Um, but, uh, it's a matter of, like, uh, where, where do you draw the line, uh, in terms of curbing the excess? Trying to find Jacob, there he is, uh, but, um, yeah, that, that is it, so, um, you know, people will say, um, okay, you see these mine workers, they look like they're about middle school age. Uh, most of them are gonna end up dead before, you know, they reach their thirtieth birthday, because they'll have black lung, because they've been working in the mines, um, ever, you know, from sunup to sundown, ever since they were, you know, uh, old enough to be able to, like, get in there. And, um, you know, these, these kids that are in, stuck in these factory conditions, many of them are gonna end up maimed, they're never gonna get a chance to get an education, they're gonna work long hours for very little pay. Um, and it, it, it isn't, you know, that fair system where it's, it's, it's on you, it's your fault if you're poor, because people are stuck in circumstances that are just impossible, that are, that, that make it so they, they'll never get out. And, and we, we see that, you know, with kids in the inner city today, um, and there's, you know, arguments being made as to how, you know, certain people have a certain level of privilege versus, you know, people who, who are underprivileged, uh, go ahead, Olivia, what were you gonna say?
Um, I'm just reading some stuff on this, and, um, I'm just a little confused, it says, um, uh, driving force behind capitalist production is the unpaid labor of workers. How exactly does that work?
The unpaid labor of workers, um, uh, it's basically saying that really, it's, it's where workers aren't getting paid what they should. Like, in other words, the bosses, the people who, who, who run these companies, if they want those gigantic profit margins, they're not going to pay, like, really generous wages to their workers and say, hey, I'm gonna really compensate you, I'm gonna give you a fair share of the profit of this company. No, they're gonna pay them as little as they possibly can, and that is going to make that company really profitable. Um, unfortunately, it still happens today, it's American companies still do it today, they just don't do it to Americans, they do it to people in other parts of the world. I mean, people in, you know, China and Mexico are getting paid two cents an hour to produce things that, you know, we buy, you know, those, those iPhones, those aren't cheap to make, um, uh, etc., you know, so, um, that's unpaid labor. And, and that really is what drives a lot of capitalist expansion, unfortunately. And so, um, yeah, so a big theme that we're gonna see as we go forward is kind of this battle between the classes. The upper class wanting to hold on to all the money it can, you know, and just being, you know, unreasonably stingy and greedy. Uh, and the lower class trying to find ways, um, to fight back and to get a better, a bigger slice of the pie, so to speak, and we've already talked about some of that, you know, like, I mean, the Irish mine workers were murdering, you know, people who, who were supervisors to try to, like, get what they wanted, but obviously, that's not a good strategy, but, you know, how do you make it fair in a, in kind of like a, you know, a free system where the government doesn't just step in and just fix?
It's weird that we're still in that fight till like this day.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, it is the perennial fight in any capitalist system, although, trust me, um, the conditions for even the, even the poorest in America now are so much better than they were back then, like, it, it's, it's not even, like, people were literally on the edge of starvation and literally wearing rags, uh, back at, in this day and age, and, and their lives. Uh back at in this day and age and and their lives were. You know, we just, we we it is hard to wrap for us to wrap our heads around really how how miserable and how poor. Uh people were, a lot of people were back at this time um. Alright, so uh even though um this was considered like the the, you know. Anathema, you know, like you you cannot go here, you cannot do this, you et cetera kind of thing um. Because of what happened in eighteen seventy seven with the Great Railroad Strike and the National Labor Union. Um the workers began to organize um and. Try once again to form a labor union because the one thing of value that they have. That they can withhold from the bosses, you know, in order as a bargaining chip, what is their labor? And of course, what we're talking about there is a strike. Now, the last time this happened, the strike just went wildly out of control and cities all across the country on fire. And they had to send in federal troops and it was just a giant disaster. Um but the bosses fear this. They fear, you know, the 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 poor kind of banding together and 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 sticking it to them. And so they have already kind of gotten together and um decided that they're going to blacklist anybody. Who um is is a known labor union member or organizer um. And so the Knights of Labor, you know, and we discussed what blacklisting is uh in fourth block. Uh anybody, what is blacklisting, just for people, benefit of people in sixth block? Um go ahead, Brady.
Well, blacklisting was like, bet, well, I mean, blacklisting is just getting basically a list together of people who can't do this and that. And in this context, it's like keeping them from being hired to places because they'll just cause problems. It it's just like the list of troublemakers.
Right, and that strikes a deep fear for workers, like, I have a family, I have to feed them, you know, I I have to have a job somewhere, you know, so. It it's striking at that that kind of that 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 core fear, you know, that that all workers have of of. Not being able to find a job. And so um. The uh the the Knights of Labor starts out in a very secretive manner and they they do kind of like these initiation rites. Uh similar in some ways to what the Freemasons do, um you know, we talked about how the Klan had, when it started out, had done the same sort of thing. Yeah, I like, go ahead.
So the slide says that they're mainly secret, but were. Because they were secret, were they able to actually like do any big movements for the poorer worker class as a secret labor union?
Uh that's an excellent question. Um it starts out secretly, so if uh if I need to adjust my slide a little bit, I probably should, but. Um eventually, um uh it is going to, by by the time we get into that, so in the eighteen seventies. The Knights of Labor is very secretive, okay? I was started by Uriah Stevens and nine tailors in Philadelphia. Um and you had to be initiated in and you had to go through all these rituals and swear all these oaths in order to keep it safe and insecure. But by the eighteen eighties, uh under the leadership of Terrence Powderly, it grows into a massive. National organization with seven hundred thousand members and by that time. Uh the blacklisting thing wasn't as strong among companies because they're like, I can't. Blacklist my entire, you know, workforce here. Um and there's so many people that are a part of it now that like it, blacklisting just became um. Like something that wasn't practical, uh just because you wouldn't be able to find very many good workers if you did it. Uh Ethan, go ahead.
Guessing the strategy was be secretive so you can grow to the point where you're so big that they can't. Basically do those things to squash you.
Yeah, right. So so that's what allowed it to grow as a s- in a s- when it was in its beginnings, when it was small. And then once it became big, you know, blacklisting just wasn't practical anymore. Uh but. Just so you know, the 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 Knights of Labor is a very forward thinking insti- eh eh, you know, group. They they allow um everybody in. Uh they they do not see any bar in terms of race or gender. Um and they, or ideologies, they're they're allowing communists and anarchists and all kinds of people in. So really, they're very open and forward thinking in terms of, you know, their membership and they call for. They have a platform where they're calling for things that are, you know, like way ahead of their time, you know, like. Um equal pay for women, uh e- equality in terms of how the races are treated in the in the workplace. Um uh and then just more government regulation as well and and so um. You know, this is, this is the workers, you know, striking back. This is them, you know, kind of saying, okay, here's what we want. And um of course, we're gonna see how this all plays out in just a little bit. Um now. We do need to turn uh as we're kind of getting into the midst of the eighteen eighties um to. The um immigration restrictions that were placed upon uh various immigrants at this time. Because there is a reaction um against the waves of immigration and Congress reacts to the public. And and enacts laws that they want. Um so the nativist reaction um really produces two big. Anti-immigration laws. The first one is the Chinese Exclusion Act of eighteen eighty-two, which um. You know, Hayes had vetoed it, but um Arthur um uh basically allows it to become a law. And um it banned uh further immigration from China altogether, just because the West Coast. Was seeing a flood of immigrants from China and really, this is driven mostly by the events inside of China. China is going through a very difficult. Uh century with, you know, exploitation by the various European powers, um etcetera. Opium wars, typing rebellion, all that. Um and then um the Alien Contract Labor Act of eighteen eighty-five. Also known as the Contract Labor Act of eighteen eighty-five banned employers and other benefactors in the United States. For paying for immigrants to come across the ocean um. Uh and instead, they wanted them to hire people who were already here, um you know, and again, companies are just trying to do what. Makes financial sense to them. Yes, Nick, go ahead.
I guess they were just kind of fed up with immigration, but always the overall, just like, like the benefits, it just seems so like such a big. Or decree or just a large exclusion of people just for just a. There's such an influx, I guess, it just seems like such a big deal, like it make you just such a big deal of the innovation.
Yeah, it's 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 what we call a nativist reaction. It's kind of a backlash, you know, people are like, you know, saying. I don't want um anymore of these people here, you know, and when you get a certain kind of like. You know, uh critical mass of people who are all saying that. Then they're putting pressure on their their representatives in the House of Representatives and their senators. By extension, are also feeling the pressure uh to do something. And so eventually, this is this, the the federal government's reaction is just like Congress feeling the pressure. Yeah, Brayden, go ahead.
So why, why were these companies paying for immigrants to come across? Like, could they just pay them less and so they were like, okay, I'm just gonna create this massive influx of people into the country?
Yeah, yeah, essentially, that's it. Yeah, like, I mean, they're just like, I mean, I can take advantage of these people, I can pay them less. I can have them sign this really unfair contract where they will pay, they will work, you know, their passage off for X number of years. And it's just gonna be like a ridiculous deal. Uh and, you know, uh just taking advantage of people, essentially, is what they're doing. Uh Scott, go ahead.
Can they just do that to poor Americans too? Like.
Yeah, but it's not as easy. Um like i- immigrants just don't understand, you know, a lot of how things work. And once you're here for a little while, you you begin to understand, well, this is a fair wage, you know, like everybody else is getting paid this in certain. Factories, so, you know.
They just exploited like everyone, would they ever know to that it was wrong?
Well, I mean, the it's just like, it's it's just kind of like, there is no government regulation of it, so like until this law is passed, actually. Uh so essentially, there's just, they're just taking advantage of whoever is dumb enough to like let them. Uh so uh yeah, I i- and then once you sign the contract, it's a contract and you have to, you have to fulfill it. Uh unfortunately, uh Faith, go ahead.
But I don't think it's necessarily that the people are dumb. I think it's a new currency, a new country, a new language. I think that there's a lot of different.
Yeah, no, and and that's not, yeah, that's not what I meant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but like.
Yeah.
Go ahead, what were you gonna say?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think that the fact that the people saw that and just saw it as an opportunity. Because they believed that they were better because they were like the employer or they were richer than the people, I think that's disgusting.
It is, I mean, it is, it's just the way, i- i- and capitalism just feeds on that. They like, you know, that's what drives the capitalist system. Is that that constant, you know, kind of e- exploitation of people's self-interest and greed, you know, that's is is. And and of course, the these are the kinds of things people do. Um they look for ways to game it so they can make even more money and and take advantage of people and don't feel bad about it. Uh Ethan, go ahead. Ethan. Alright, Ethan, I'm not.
You cut out for a little bit, hold on.
Go ahead.
Okay, so um. What did the Alien Contract Labor Act, did that affect basically the positions? Those companies had when dealing with the labor unions?
It um it basically banned employers uh from.
So they basically couldn't get people other, it's like, okay, so.
You're gonna.
Basically, before that labor unions, they basically just like, oh, I can just get this immigrant labor to sort of stave off that. But now it's starting to get a bit more tense.
Right, so so basically, it's like where they say, um, you know, eh. This is just not an option anymore for companies, like, if you're gonna hire people, you gotta hire them from here, you know, and uh so. It just kind of, it just, it just shuts the door on that particular way of exploiting people. Uh Scott, what were you gonna say?
Were there any religious movements who were like, the lower class should not be treated like this, we need.
Yes, you're actually anticipating something that we're gonna be coming, it's gonna come up on a slide. Um it's called the Social Gospel, uh and actually, uh this is something that historians often put, like. The social Darwinist way of looking at things, which is what we're talking about with the rich people and the companies just exploiting people as much as they possibly can. Versus people in, you know, churches kind of saying, hey, we have a responsibility to go in. And meet people's basic needs for food, shelter and ba- basic survival needs first. And then preach the gospel to them after that. And so this is where you start to see the church go into the big cities. And start missions and start homeless shelters and and all of that as a way of ameliorating all of the the needs of the poor. You know, and Dwight Moody and others, you know, like they have their own versions of this and. So yes, the church definitely responds in a big way uh to kind of this this exploitation that goes on. And um tries to ameliorate things. And so they're kind of opposed to each other because um ones like, you know. If if you see a beggar on the street, don't give him a handout, you know, because you're just perpetuating their laziness. And you're making them stay poor. And the social gospel people are gonna say, no, that person is in survival mode. They need basic things in order to survive, so give them food, give them shelter. Uh and then they can start building themselves up. Um and so there's like, you know, like, it's like if I walk down the street and I see a beggar sitting out on the corner, do I give him twenty dollars or not? And that's, that's still that debate now, like, you know, do I give him twenty dollars or not? I don't know. Like, is this guy just gonna go and just buy alcohol? Is it, is is he actually a fake beggar and actually has like a decent amount of money? Or is this, is he just taking advantage or is this the right thing to do, you know, like, so. Um you know, and of course, there are people who are bad examples on on both sides, but. Uh it's an excellent question, Scott, and it's one we're gonna get to as we get further in. Um Ethan, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Oh, sorry, I just have my hand up.
You're just, okay, alright, so um that's actually gonna take us to. Uh something that becomes necessary because of the railroads. Um so. Really, there is no set standard time across America or the world. Um and everybody kind of just sets their clocks, so yeah, the sun's uh up in the middle of the sky around noonish and. You know, that's kind of the standard-ish-ish, but really, like you could go from one town to another and the clocks would be very different. Um but it really starts to get confusing for the railroads. Because the railroads operate on trains leaving at a particular time. And so when you have trains going from one city to another and leaving and arriving and leaving and arriving. It's it's causing mass confusion when clocks are not all synchronized. Uh and so um in eighteen sixty-nine, Samuel Pierpont Langley of the Allegheny Observatory uh created a service. That could actually provide astronomical times, precise times based on astron- you know. Astronomical clocks, which are gonna be the most accurate clocks possible. And it was actually a school teacher by the name of Charles Dowd that proposed that the US to be divided into four time zones in eighteen seventy. And um then in eighteen seventy-two, uh Sanford Fleming proposed that the whole world uh be divided into time zones. And because the railroads were running into so many problems by the eighteen eighties, they adopted Down's system. Um uh in eighteen eighty-three and eventually, that lead led to the creation of the time zones. Which we still have today. Um and uh but um. They, of course, added an extra fifth time zone to it and now that fifth time zone has been wiped out and it's back to four time zones. In the United States, but we're familiar with these, like, yes, Max, what were you gonna say?
When does this actually like go into worldwide time zones instead of just America train times?
It's it's the mid eighteen eighties that this happens because trains in the United States. Tr- train companies in the United States are gonna institute this and other people in other parts of the world are gonna see how. Effective it is and they're going to, we're just like a very large country geographically compared to a lot of these other countries. That are more advanced like in Europe. And so when people see how advan- how uh. What an advantage it is to have this system, they begin adopting it as well and it becomes worldwide um by. Uh the eighteen nineties, uh Ethan, go ahead.
So apparently, it seems China kind of went in the opposite direction. On that part, since basically they adopted one giant single time zones, where people could literally be waking up. Like both at six on each end of the country, one would be in complete darkness and the other would be like almost eight. Like, cuz it's Beijing time, I think, is what they.
Yeah, well, and and you have to remember that Emperor Xi Xi uh of the the Qing Dynasty or King Dynasty, basically, she. She on purpose would do the opposite of the Europeans, just to kind of thumb her nose at them a little bit. Um you know, like, for instance, they gave her a whole bunch of money to modernize her her country and they're like, look, you need, you need roads, you need bridges. We're doing business in your country and it's like very difficult because you don't have this stuff. Uh so here, here's a bunch of money and she she built a jade boat uh in the middle of like a river. Um you know, eh so they could all go out and like have parties on it. It was like actually like a a a stone structure. Um built up and then it looked like a boat.
I wonder why the central time zone is so large, the original one, like so disproportionately large. Uh because most railroads ran through those points.
I mean, and they just had to figure out how to draw the lines and where to draw them and like, no matter where you draw them, you're gonna end up with some.
You can see like, you know, like most railroads traveling would just go from like Texas, Chicago or some of those lanes. So it would be convenient to have them all in the same time.
Right, plus, you know, it it has to be where generally speaking, it's gonna be an hour difference. Um you know, in terms of, you know, like in this area. The the sun is at the highest point in the sky, um you know, when it's noon. Uh and then in this area, the sun is at the highest point in the sky when it's noon, but you know, like as you get further and further to the edge. You know, it's gonna be a little more and more off and so eh there is no making everybody happy, okay? They just basically do it.
I think there is a recent study that showed how like living on the left edge of a time zone actually. Like worker efficiency, they woke up when it was dark.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I'm sure there probably is, uh yeah. So, yes, Brayden, what were you gonna say?
How is this not an issue that they see earlier? Cuz I like, they've had railroads for a long time at this point. And I feel like this would be like a really noticeable thing.
Well, it takes a while for people to figure out like how to like, you know, fix it, you know, like there was just kind of. Confusion and they dealt with it for a long time, but just remember, like, really, the railroads are really kind of coming into their own. With Vanderbilt, you know, doing his thing in the eighteen seventies and it's only the eighteen eighties that we're now talking about this, so. Um, it was proposed in the eighteen seventies by these guys who saw the problem and said, hey, here's a solution. But it isn't widely adopted by everybody until all the big railroads agree in the eighteen eighties to do it. Um, yes, Faith.
I feel like, didn't a lot of towns and train stations have their own clocks and stuff in the train station, so I feel like the trains. From then would have probably operated on whatever time was displayed, like either on a big clock tower in the main town or just whatever.
That's the way it was, but they all had to be, they all had to be synchronized um according to that that astronomical clock, so. Um, yeah, so this is just where we get our our time zones, um, and it was because of the railroads, because the railroads just could not function on a national scale. Without, you know, clocks that are all relatively the same. So, um, yeah, creation of standard time, um, and kind of funny, it's a schoolteacher that comes up with the uh with the solution. That everybody adopts a little bit later. Alright, so in the campaign of eighteen eighty-four, um. The uh, the Democrats really kind of sense that there is a strong, strong public reaction. Against this corruption uh that is endemic in the system and really, I mean, the Republican Party has just gone. Full-blown political machine corruption, it is, it's it's bad. So uh in spite of the noble kind of streak that Arthur had gotten, you know, it it's, you know, they're not gonna run Arthur again and they're they're gonna continue in their corrupt ways. So the Democrats are like, let's run against it, let's let's find an honest politician. Which is hard to do, but there was a guy uh who was thoroughly honest um when it came to. Everything he did as as a governor, and that was the governor of New York, um, Grover Cleveland, um. And Grover Cleveland was just this hard-working guy who was, you know, there late at night, you know, doing what was in the interest of the public. And just um was the enemy of political machines and corrupt politicians everywhere, like eh they just absolutely hated him. But he had actually gotten all the way to his position as governor of New York precisely on the fact that people were. Voting for him because they they hated the the corruption and the machine politicians as well. And so um the Democrats decided to run him as their candidate and the Republicans, again. The battle of the political machines continues and this time, James G Blaine of the half-breed political machine, the political machine boss. Of the half-breeds becomes the candidate for the Republican Party and um. So, these guys are gonna try to like, you know, battle it out here and of course, um. Since they can't find anything in his public life to blame him for. Uh, the the Republicans are gonna go after Grover Cleveland in his personal life, trying to find some issue. That is gonna turn voters off. Yeah, Jacob, go ahead.
Um, I was reading on the, how they had to go after his prior life and did the idea that he fathered an illegitimate child really affect his public opinion all that much? Cuz like, I know if someone like him ran like in today's world, no one really batted an eye on the idea, but like back in the eighteen eighties, how was that viewed?
Uh, bothering a child out of wedlock is is definitely frowned upon at this time, um. And the question is, did he leave the mother and the child destitute or not? And Grover Cleveland actually had been faithfully supporting his 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 uh child and um. So this child was not left destitute, uh, and and that really is kind of the key thing here is, you know. His response is, um. I I am, I am actually, you know, like, i- i- we weren't married at the time, but I am being a responsible father and I am, I am a. Basically taking care of this child, but here's what the Republicans do, they say, oh, they come up with a slogan, like a little chant. Uh, to to make fun of Grover Cleveland for this, they're like, um, mama, where's my pa? He's gone to the White House, ha, ha, ha. I mean, and it sounds so corny and stupid now, but that was actually a little political, you know. Thing that they had a little slogan to try to damage uh Cleveland's image. Because he has a sterling image as a public servant, like just absolutely, you know, spotless in his record. So, um, yeah, wow, that re- that caused a lot of hands. Uh, Jacob, did you have anything else or did did that answer the question?
Uh, that answered my question. So, it really just back then it was viewed as a problem, but he owned up to it, so it did not really affect the public opinion all that much cuz he owned up to it.
Let's just say this, like, people are having to choose, like, yeah, per- his 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 personal life isn't perfect and according to the Christian. Morals of the time, this is a significant issue, like, this is not something that you just wink at, but. The fact that he's supporting the child and that he has faithfully supported the child and has in, you know, without anybody forcing him to, cuz there's the. There nobody's like forcing him to go and and uh the government's not saying, you know, we're gonna make you a deadbeat dad if you don't do it or whatever. He's just, he's just doing it. Um, that really ameliorates uh the sc- the 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 scandal. In this private life, cuz it is a scandal. Um, but uh, you know, it it basically. Still, um, people have to choose. Do I want the person who is obviously the most, one of the most corrupt public figures of. The entire nineteenth century, James G Blaine, head of the half-breed political machine, do I want the public corruption? Versus, you know, the public, you know, spotless record honesty. Or am I more worried about the fact that he's never fathered a child out of wedlock? Versus the fact that he has and and a lot of people like say, well, i- it matters more, you know, that this guy has a almost spotless record as as a politician. So you just have to choose. Uh, Olivia, go ahead.
Um, I guess the only thing I wanted to say when I was reading that was it kind of sounds like Twitter comments under any political person ever, it's like these. Corny cheesy comments that people make up about different things, they try to blame them on, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that slogan just, I I it's always stuck in my head, it's just like, you know, the dumbest sounding slogan, but it it it. It, that was what they kind of went around saying about him. Uh, go ahead, Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
I was just gonna clarify, so the Democrats didn't really have much on the Republicans, did they?
Um, that we're actually getting to it, no, like, James G Blaine is so corrupt, he's, so like, in terms of. Like, what they're gonna go after him on, I haven't gotten to it yet, but like, cuz I was answering Jacob's question, but I'm just about to get to it, so. Yeah, they do actually, it's just that James G Blaine doesn't have a child out of wedlock, so, you know, in that one instance, he looks better, you know, but like. In everything else, he looks way worse. Uh, Ethan, go ahead. Ethan Burke?
Sorry, there we go. Yeah, it seems like this situation is like. Like, yeah, I may have screwed over people and like ruined the economy and then destroyed the government and also corrupt and everything, but at least I didn't ruin my marriage.
Well, no, this was before Grover Cleveland was married, so, yeah, it's um.
Something similar to that.
Yeah, right, but it's it's like, at least I don't have a child out of wedlock, you know, yeah, so.
You know, there's like caught a place on fire, basically.
Yeah, uh, but yeah, and and, yeah, so anyway, um, so basically, um. The Republicans are just openly corrupt and what they're hoping to do is they're hoping to use. The cities where there's these large centers of populations to swing big states in their favor. And they know if they can, if they can do it in enough big cities, they can just flip the election their way and 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 they're just. Openly corrupt about it, like, you know, and so, um, there are some Republicans who are so disgusted with the. The um, you know, the corruption in their own party that they cross over. And they vote Democrat, they're known as the mugwumps, um, and and they're basically people who are Republican, but who who are just absolutely sick and tired of the corruption. And so here's what Blaine hopes, he's really hoping that it's gonna come down to the state of New York. Where Grover Cleveland is governor and where he is popular, um, and. James G Blaine is like, okay, in New York City, okay, I need the Irish Catholic community to vote. My way in order to swing the vote, um, you know, with the political machine kind of strategies that they were using. Uh, and he had his people out there working the Irish Catholic community, but one preacher who goes out there goes a little too far. Um, when he is trying to drum up support for James G Blaine, he says, um, that the Democrats. Are the party of rum, Romanism and rebellion, okay? So, the party of rum, meaning that when it comes to the temperance issue. Uh, they were not in favor of banning alcohol, uh, and the Republicans are, the Republicans are trying to get the church vote by saying, hey, we want. To ban alcohol, so they're they're pushing for temperance and again, you know, it's like, well, how can you be so corrupt and then still? Be churchy, but you know, it's it's, it's just the the contradictions that people li- are willing to live with. Um, and then Romanism is is the critical one, they're like, yeah, um, eh, the the Democrats are the party of the popists. You know, the people who uh let the Pope kind of run things and and a lot of Protestants saw Catholics as. Almost like not even Christian because of the Pope, you know, and so that Romanism comment really cuts. Uh, people who are Catholic and it was being said by a Republican supporter, so this is gonna hurt Blaine. With the Irish Cath- Catholic community and then rebellion, of course, is a reference to the Civil War, so, um. Uh, basically, uh, the um, tha- that comment right there, many historians go back and they look at it and they say. Um, that um, this was something that really, really affected, uh, you know, how the critical state of New York is going to turn out. So as you can see here, um, the solid south goes Democrat, the west and many, many parts of the north go Republican. But the critical state of New York, which is just enough to tip, um, the electoral vote over to Cleveland. Ends up going Democrat and uh as a result, Grover Cleveland comes in as a reformer. At a time when most of the establishment is incredibly corrupt. Um, and uh tries to, he kind of takes a wrecking ball to the whole system. Uh, at the time, yeah, go ahead, uh, Ethan.
Isn't Grover Cre- Cleveland the only president to serve two non-consecutive terms?
Yes, yes.
It's like once in the twenties, right?
Uh, no, no, eh, he'll.
It was the thirties, I think.
No, 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 he's the only person to do it and he serves, uh, he serves this term. He's, he's out and they use a very corrupt way of getting him out, uh, like to, they basically cheat to prevent him from winning a second term. But then he comes back and wins another term, so um af- right after that, so, um, but anyway. Um, Grover Cleveland is gonna be one of the most hard-working and honest presidents that America's ever going to have, as a matter of fact, when. Historians rank presidents, he's ranked near the top, um, and uh he, like, you think. Chester Arthur was like no to the office seekers, he's like no, uh, in a big way, um, hold on. One of our dogs is wandering in here and he is kind of getting into stuff.
Let us see your dog, can you, can we see the dog?
Uh, well, it might be kind of hard.
Please, hold him up, please.
RJ. RJ, come here. RJ. RJ. He's big.
Look at him!
Alright, now I gotta, now I gotta get him out of here. Sorry about that, but, um, yeah, uh, so. Basically, uh, he is, one of his best and worst traits. Is that he is super stubborn, okay? So, my way of explaining this is, um. Stubbornness as a president can be, and especially as like a governor and other things can be great when you're standing up to corruption. But when it comes to foreign affairs, sometimes it can be a really bad trade, it can get America into a bad situation. Um, because, you know, you're you're quote standing on principle and stuff and and sometimes that can lead to. A conflict, uh, et cetera, so, um, essentially. You'll see how this all plays out, um, but he uses his veto four hundred and thirteen times, which is more than. Is twice as much than all of his predecessors combined and he's constantly vetoing bills because they're they're just too, they're spending too much money. And, um, uh, corrupt politicians hate his guts, he's wrecking the entire system. He's wrecking everything, they hated him when he was governor of New York and now they absolutely hate him as president. Um, and uh historians often rank him as one of our best presidents, although you'll see what happens to him in the eighteen nineties. Um, uh, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna spoil it, but, um. He basically, uh, is is gonna be very uh strong. And 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 kind of rigid in his approach to things, but, and this is gonna be very effective when it comes to cleaning up corruption, but. You'll see how things turn out, um, so anyway, um, that is Grover Cleveland and that takes us to kind of. Um, this, this does go back to, I think, maybe Scott asked this earlier, um, a question about, um, uh. The, um. The the nativism that is is part of the uh, the American psyche at this time and how does that, how does that? Uh, parlay with, you know, people's religious views, et cetera. In eighteen eighty-five, um, the Reverend Josiah Strong writes a book called Our Country. Okay, that that just kind of tells you right there, you know, okay, it's our country, um, it's possible future and it's present crisis. And in, basically in the book that he's, he says that, um, industrialization had brought, um, seven great evils. Uh, that had kind of focused in the cities, um, and uh, which he called dens of hell. And, um, listen to the list of evils here, immigration, that's an evil, okay? Uh, urbanization is an evil, um, socialism, materialism, uh Mormonism. Catholicism and alcoholism, okay, so, um. This book is probably one of the most cringey books in terms of like present day, you know, like when we look at this now and and just read. You know, the texts were just like, oh my gosh, I can't believe this guy is actually saying this stuff, but, um, you know, he he really. He he says these, these, all of these things are evil, but then he says, you know, it's a huge mission field, we need to go in, we need to, um. Kind of preach the gospel, do charitable work, et cetera, um, and uh, but really, this book has kind of become. One of the big examples of nativism in the eighteen eighties is is, you know. This book and and obviously just the the title itself, our country, it's our country, uh, it kind of, you know, goes right along with that. And that actually takes us to a slide, which I know some people have here, um. Olivia and Paris.
I just wanted to make a quick remark before Coca-Cola starts, um, just wanna point out that literally almost half of his evils are just other religions.
Yeah, right, I mean, Catholicism, yeah, eh, that's like a mainline.
Like Mormon, like Mormonism.
Yeah, Mormons, it's an evil, ah, yeah, I know, I know, it's just, you know, that's the way that you're white Anglo-Saxon Protestants, you're WASPs. Remember, we talked about WASPs before, that's their, that's their view and they are a big voting bloc. And they are the ones who are feeling all threatened by these new waves of people who are different, who are coming into the country, um. Uh, something that happens in lots of countries, you know, the established group feels threatened by the other groups that are coming in and da, 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 da. Alright, so Coca-Cola, Olivia, are you ready for this or do you want me to do it?
Yes, I'm ready.
You are ready, okay, great, so go ahead.
Okay, so basically, there is this guy named John Pemberton, I think that's how you say his name.
That's right.
Um, he, first of all, he served as a lieutenant on the Confederate side in the Civil War, so you could say that. The Civil War played a part in creating Coca-Cola.
It did, why?
Yeah, and that is because while he was serving in the war, he. Um, suffered from a sab- saber wound, not exactly sure what that is.
It's a sword that people had that they carried with them that in close combat you would use it, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, he suffered from that.
Officers had it, not everybody, uh.
Okay. And during recovery, he became addicted to um. I don't know how to pronounce it.
Morphine. Yeah, oh, he be, he basically has an opium addiction, which is a morphine addiction, yeah. So painkiller, essentially.
Yeah, it helped him, it helped not make it as painful and it helped him recover. And eventually he became addicted to it and sadly that did happen to a lot of people.
Right. But he happens to be in a field.
Eventually, he realized his.
Yeah.
And began to experiment.
Okay, I'm sorry, he happens to be in a field, like, like, his job gives him the ability to try to fix his problem. With some sort of self-medication, which is what's gonna lead to the creation of Coca-Cola, so go ahead.
Yeah, so he began to experiment with painkillers that were opium-free alternatives to morphine. And he tested out um, cocoa wines. Is that how you say that? Words are hard.
Yeah, that's what he calls it. He he's gonna call Coca-Cola's original name is Pemberton's French Cocoa Wine. Um, uh, and you can see, yeah, there it is right there, French Wine Coca, Pemberton's French Wine Coca, but um. Yeah, uh, and and go ahead, yes, but you are correct, yes.
Yeah, and he made. Um, eventually released it to the public with the name Pemberton's French Wine Coca, which is the poster. And this was advertised to war veterans who suffered drug addiction like he did. And um, when parks in Georgia outlawed alcohol in the temperance legislation. He produced a non-alcoholic beverage as a fountain drink rather than a medicine, so you can guess what's gonna come out of that. Um, it contained high levels of caffeine from the cola nut cocaine from the cocoa leaf and coordinated water.
There's only trace amounts of of cocaine, essentially.
Yeah, so it's not like, you know, tons of cocaine in your drink. That's, yeah.
But but yeah, it's it's very powerful stimulant, okay, so it's kind of like the opposite of the painkiller, kind of like keeps you awake. It's bracing, it's like an energy drink almost, uh, but it's got a lot of stuff in it and pharmaceutical. Industry at this time is not regulated at all, like it it's just people are coming up with.
No.
Here's this elixir that cures cancer, here's this elixir and and all of it is just, you know, totally unregulated. Most of it is is just mostly ninety-nine percent sales and two percent it actually has anything in it that does anything. Uh, Ethan, go ahead, what were you gonna say?
This is back when they still used colonuts for sources of caffeine and most fountain drinks. Yeah, I think, didn't those phase out by like the twenties after there's like a colonut shortage or something?
Yeah, and there's also going to eventually be some regulation through the FDA, which hasn't been created yet, but will in like the.
Yeah, FDA always has for some reasons outlawing foreign beans or nuts for some reason.
Well, if it's a threat to people's health, they will, they will do it, yeah.
I think um, in Madagascar, they still grow uh, colonuts and you can see people like selling them on the street. It's like, they just snack on it for like caffeine.
Uh, every country regulates it in its own way, but they're still around, yeah, they're.
Apparently, they're very bitter in taste.
Yeah, and they're still actually used in in some things, uh, uh, go ahead, Faith. Faith, you have your hand up? Can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry, um, there is a lot of other stuff that they put cocaine for like. Um, drugs and stuff like that or medicine, they thought it was medicine to be helpful.
There's no regulation at all of of like you could basically do opium. But people were just like, well, if you go down that road, this is what happens to you kind of thing. So, yeah, like. Cause there were, there were, there were places um, where you could go and smoke opium, uh, they were called opium dens. And they're often run by Chinese immigrants, um, because China had a huge opium problem at the time. Because the British were importing opium that they grew in India into China and making it just absolute. Huge amounts of money by exploiting people's drug addictions uh, that they they were creating. And of course, you know, this is gonna lead to all kinds of issues in China, but um, and then eventually. A backlash against the Europeans, which Ethan's gonna be talking about when we get to his slide, uh, but. It's uh, yeah, it the the, there are all kinds of, yeah, like we, we now, you know, know, oh, that's a bad drug, you know, we can't. No, you're not supposed to, like, it's illegal, et cetera, but the Controlled Substances Act wasn't passed until nineteen seventy, so. Uh, a lot of these drugs are just kinda out there and the government's like, that's a bad idea, but they don't really regulate it uh, that, like, and make it illegal. Until later.
Yeah, there's this thing that I pulled up, I saw it a while back and then I just wanted to bring it up. There's this thing called one night cough syrup. It has alcohol, cannabis, chloroform and morphine, like, all in it completely. It says each ounce contains that, so I mean, I guess that'll get rid of a cough. It might kill you like twenty years.
Yeah, if you're dead, it won't bother you, I guess.
Yeah.
You'll be dead in one night, yeah.
Yeah. But you won't have to worry about the cough.
Yeah, I think partly a reason why it's kind of saying things like this is that, one. If you're, if you're very likely to die with like your hands stuck in machinery or you're gonna die of illness or just general sanitation is bad. You're not really focusing on what a drug can do to you twenty years down the line.
True, yeah, that's true, uh, very, very true. Uh, and Nick, what were you gonna say?
Um, when did the um, like the, I'm not sure if they have to describe it, like the parlor, like the soda parlors like come around. Like, when did that sort of like, when did that whole business kind of originate?
The parlors of what now? I couldn't quite.
Like the, like the, um, like the, they had like the the soda uh, fountains, like all those.
Oh, yeah, um, that, we're, we're getting to that, um, Olivia is gonna actually be talking about it, so I'm not gonna spoil it. But if she doesn't get to it, I'll definitely answer that question. So Olivia, back to you.
Yeah, so um, the next thing that I have is that Frank Robertson, his partner, kind of. Um, came up with the new name of Coca-Cola for the syrup formula. And as the drink became popular, he sold his rights off of the drink to Greg, Griggs. Whatever his name is.
Greg's Candler, okay.
Can't say his name either.
Let me just stop for a second, so um, to answer your question, Nick, th- there are in in. Pharmacist stores, they have this thing called a soda fountain where soda water, which had carbonation in it. Basically, could be mixed with one of the elixirs or one of the drinks that was available from the pharmacist. And so Coca-Cola got added to the the list of drinks that you could mix with carbonated water. And that made it more appealing. It made it easier to kind of drink because it's really syrupy. Uh, in in just, it's hard to um, ingest it and like it without that. That carbonation added in, but when you add that in, it makes it a much more um, palatable uh, drink. Uh, and of course, you were drinking it as as, almost as an elixir to make yourself feel better, a tonic. Um, yes, Eily. Eily.
Um, I just wanted to say that soda fountains sound amazing, like modern daytime, not with drugs, like just. Going to the water fountain, then boom, you got Diet Coke. Man, life's good.
Yeah, yeah, soda fountain, yeah, it's it's, and it was a staple in uh, these places for a really long time. Uh, Ethan, go ahead.
Were uh, soda fountains ever used as like, oh, when, you know, temperance started really getting kicked up, it's like. Oh, well, hopefully these things like they are prepared like alcohol, they can give effects. Maybe similar to alcohol, so maybe use it to treat alcohol.
Well, this is an alternative drink and it's the the, like, as we get to Ace of Griggs Candler and his marketing genius, he's going to be the one. Gonna kind of um, take temperance and use it as part of his markings, marketing strategy and say, look, hey, this is an alcohol-free drink, which. Has all these benefits and, you know, makes you feel good and et cetera.
Yeah, so basically they fill the spot of alcohol when temperance starts rolling out.
They they advertise in that direction, of course, it's not, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that everybody goes there, but yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, it can't be whiskey, but at least it's something.
It helps, yeah, it it helps the drink grow for sure. Uh, Scott, go ahead.
How many people put drugs in their drink so people would buy it and get addicted or whatever?
Lots, lots, but here's the thing, like, you you know, if you don't, if you don't like, if you're really careful with the dosage, um. You can hurt people and of course, that's gonna hurt your eventual overall, like, you know, profitability eventually, so. You know, it's it's definitely something that uh, the only, the only reason why people like tried to ameliorate the. The the amount of dangerous drugs that they put into these things was because bad things would happen to people and, you know, there might be lawsuits, et cetera. But also just, you know, their product wouldn't be as popular, cause it would get a bad reputation. Uh, Boyer, go ahead.
Imagine just getting a drink and you're like, huh, this looks pretty cool, you know, I'll try this other, this makes you feel better and you take a couple sips. And all of a sudden, everything is floating.
Or, yeah, it's just like, wow, I am so awake now.
You are, you are just listening to colors.
Yeah, yeah, it's like what people feel when they drink energy drinks now, except like probably times ten or whatever, yeah, so it's. Uh, alright, so anyway, um, we've gotten to the point where Pemberton um, uh, is eventually going to succumb. Uh, to cancer, I believe. He had uh, some sort of cancer and he dies, passes on the company. To his son, who uh, has also like developed uh, an addiction to opiates. Um, uh, and then Ace of Griggs Candler uh, had kind of come in and had bought some, some interest in the company. Uh, and then buys out the son, the son also dies, uh, and then he buys him out. And gets control of Coca-Cola and from there, what happens? Olivia.
Um, that's about as far as I got from that point. I just got that the company was created in eighteen ninety-two.
Yeah, and so really Ace of Griggs Candler is the guy who makes Coca-Cola into one of the biggest companies in America just by continually. Trying to fill a niche, um, and 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 basically really just kind of. Um, taking that brand and really kind of, you know, making sure that that brand, uh, you know, maintained its reputation.
Maybe literally designed Santa Claus.
I mean.
So he took a lot of effort.
Yeah, uh, he he's, he's a marketing genius. He's considered one of the greatest businessmen in American history. And um, just, you know, we could go down a whole road with that, but we don't have time, but he, he basically makes Coca-Cola into this giant. And of course, he's going to change the formula um, as time goes by. Uh, and really, it's the high sugar content that is gonna eventually become the um, the the new addictive. Kind of draw for Coca-Cola as it becomes kind of this, this thing that becomes marketed first in bottles and eventually in cans. Um, and just, you know, there's, there's a whole long story that we could get into, but we we just don't have time, but um, yeah. That is the story of Coca-Cola, which uh, starts out, you know, basically has a way for a druggist um, in, down in Georgia. To deal with his morphine addiction, so um, good job, Olivia, did you have, so you you've got everything covered? Uh, yes, anything else?
Um, there was just one fact that I found besides a quote, because for some reason I couldn't really find a quote. But the amount of cocaine that was in there was nine milligrams, so you're not gonna be floating. Like Boyer said, maybe if you drink a lot, you might start to flow, but it's only nine milligrams.
I could make it happen.
Nine milligrams per gallon, uh, or like, what's it? Nine milligrams per what?
Um, per glass.
Per glass, okay, alright, yeah, so I mean, obviously, all these, all these elixirs and tonics all, or you're, you're rolling the dice. Basically, when, when you drink one of them. Um, okay, so that takes us to another slide that has. Uh, several people who have a statue of liberty, so I'm looking here to see. Uh, anybody here have Statue of Lady Kenzie? Looks like you, you do. And, okay, so it looks like Kenzie, alright, so um.
I have this one, sorry.
Um, who 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 just said that?
Elizabeth, this is.
Okay, you're the other person. Okay, I was looking on the list here, yeah, there it is. Alright, so um. I don't know, how do you guys wanna do this? Let's, let's do it like we do when we normally have two people who have the same slide, um. One person can talk about um, kind of what led up. Uh, to it and kind of the, the, you know, the background and what led up to it. And the other person can talk about the uh, the building of it, um, and the actual creation of it. Who, who has a lot on the the background and what led up to it?
I have a decent amount on the um, part where he was originally gonna do it for Egypt.
Okay, you wanna, you wanna do the background part?
If Elizabeth has more than I do, that's fine. Um, I have a lot of actual statue itself, so.
Who has a lot on the statue itself?
Kenzie.
So was that you, Elizabeth, that has a lot on the statue itself?
I do. I have about an equal amount on either, so um, it doesn't really matter to me, whatever.
You guys just decide, who wants to do what?
You itself.
Okay, cool, then I'll talk about the Egypt stuff.
Okay, cool.
Alright, so Elizabeth, go ahead, take it away.
The sculptor, um, August, Auguste Bartholdi, he originally was, he um. He took a trip to Egypt and was super inspired by the Sphinx and just the Sphinx, sorry, and then just kind of developed this passion. That was his new goal, was to build this really large monument. So, being inspired by the Sphinx, he went to Egypt and. Um, had this idea for a lighthouse shaped like a woman, um, holding up a torch um, in the Suez Canal. Um, and it was gonna be great and it was gonna be cool, but then the Egyptian government said, this is gonna cost way too much money. We're already paying for this big canal. We really don't need um, the additional cost of the statue. So he went to the United States and created it to, and proposed it to the United States government as a. As a monument to freedom and democracy, you know, all these great American principles that the US was proud of at the time. Um, and that's really most of what I have about the stuff in Egypt. I don't know where you wanna start, Kenzie, but.
Go over the general things. I mean, I'll touch on some of the stuff he touched on, but yeah.
Okay, and then, and then Elizabeth, we're gonna let you come back and add in any details that you have that um, that Elizabeth may not have had, uh. Um, I'm sorry, that Kenzie may not have had, yeah, Scott, go ahead.
Back then, did countries get money for like tourists coming in? Because Egypt could have got some money if they built the statue there.
Yeah, oh yeah, they do. You, it all depends on, you know, like you just set stuff up and, you know, profit off of it and of course, yeah, that's. Very, very old tradition. Yeah, it wasn't.
Yes.
On Egypt's part there.
No, I'm guessing they would have gotten more money from the Suez Canal. They would have gotten enough.
Sure, yeah, they're just financially strapped. Um, Egypt is uh, under the control of the manlooks. Who have in, basically tried to industrialize their country and ended up, or in build infrastructure and ended up getting into massive debt. With the British and then eventually the British are just gonna say, you owe us so much debt that basically, the way we're gonna. Have you pay it off is you're gonna have to give us your freedom and Egypt becomes a British colony as a result, so. This is all during that time period, um, and while Egypt is kind of struggling with their debt, but go ahead, um, so whoever's gonna pick up, go ahead.
Okay, okay, so Statue of Liberty is a colossal sculpture on Liberty Island in New York Harbor. Within New York City in the US, designed by French sculptor Frederick Ag- Auguste Bartholdi. It's metal framework built by Gustave Eiffel. The statue was dedicated on October twenty-eighth, eighteen eighty-six. The statue is a figure of Libertals, a road to Roman liberty goddess. She holds a torch above her head with her right hand. And in her left hand carries a tablet inscribed July fourth, seventeen seventy-six in Roman numerals, the date of the US Declaration of Independence. After its dedication, the statue became an icon of freedom and of the United States, seen as a symbol of welcome to immigrants arriving by sea. The Statue of Liberty was a joint effort between France and the US intended to commemorate the lasting friendship between the people of the two nations. Adding on to that, um, fun fact, the hundred fifty-one foot tall statue costed two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Paid by the French. The pedestal at a hundred fifty-four feet costed two hundred seventy thousand dollars paid by American sources.
Okay, and um, Elizabeth, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, yeah, I do. I just kind of have some things about the the process of construction of the statue. So once the statue, you know, they obviously had to construct it in pieces just because it's so large. Um, the arm was actually displayed, um, the arm with the torch was displayed in Philadelphia at the Centennial Exposition in eighteen seventy-six. Just as a fundraiser for the pedestal, um, and then after that convention, the pieces were displayed in Madison Square Park. Um, and then after that convention, the pieces were displayed in Madison Square Park to encourage donations as well. Um, and also the American Committee for the Statue of Liberty was established in America to fund the pedestal and that type of thing. Um, that's really all I have, other than I quoted the poem by Emma Lazarus that's on the pedestal, but.
Yeah, actually, if you have that poem, go ahead and and read it to us. Uh, the new Colossus, which is basically kind of a reference to the old Colossus of Rhodes, um because this has become kind of like what the symbol of what America's all about, so go ahead.
Um, the whole poem or just the end part?
Just the end part uh where, yeah.
Okay, um, let me pull it up. Okay, so the end part that I liked the best was the give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore, send these the homeless tempest toss to me, I lift my lamp beside the golden door. So just kind of symbolizing the, you know, welcoming immigrants to New York and that type of thing that very contrary to that nativism we were talking about.
Yeah, and 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 America is wel- welcoming huge waves of immigrants in, so you know, as as much as we talk about nativism, we have to remember that that America is still by far one of the most welcoming places in the world to immigrants. Um comparatively speaking anyway. Um, alright, uh and why is it green? Uh ladies, uh why, you know, cuz people think it's made out of green stones or something like that. Why is it green?
Um, well, it was made of copper and then it oxidized.
Yes, yeah, bronze, yeah, so oxidation oxidization of bronze, yeah, which has copper in it. Uh Nick, go ahead.
Um, always like the like the people's reaction to it, the people of the United States reaction to it cuz I know uh specifically in religious sense, uh cuz I know a lot of people are Christians or Roman goddess, so like how did the people feel about it?
Uh ladies, either one of you wanna feel that?
I did not um get any research on the public reaction to it. I didn't come across anything like.
I didn't either really, but I'd assume that they they really cherished it as a sign of freedom. And specifically what I noted about the immigration and seeing it as a welcome sign.
Okay, um and uh before I get to Mary's question, I just will I'll I'll add in a little bit as well. Uh generally speaking, people didn't see that as like a a really terrible anti-Christian thing. Um, it was something that went back to kind of like the founding of our country and the fact that our democratic revolution inspired the French Revolution, the democracy in France and kind of, you know, coming full circle a hundred years later, um saying where the French were saying thank you for inspiring the world with this successful uh experiment in democracy, so um we proudly, you know, um displayed, you know, parts of the statue prior to it uh being built. And really, the public's reaction has been a very positive one uh for the most part. Uh Mary, go ahead.
Right, I've been kind of wondering this for like for a while, but like why haven't they de- like de-oxidized the li- the Statue of Liberty? Just too big of a project or something to take on or?
I mean. I guess they'd have to keep doing it, but um it has become part of the symbol, you know, the way it looks like if if they did uh you know, wire brush it also, it would they looked copper, everybody be like freaked out, you know? Because we're so used to the green, the lime green kind of color. Uh uh yeah, and I I still have people say you mean it's not made out of lime green stone? You know, no, it's actually it's actually hollow in the middle. It's made out of metal. Um, and it's, you know, just oxidized copper or well, I mean bronze, but yeah, um, yeah. I I you know, honestly, I don't know uh beyond that. Um Ethan, go ahead.
Yeah, I think also partly another reason why they don't wanna get rid of that is because that coat of oxidized copper actually protects the underlying leather layers of copper from being damaged and worn.
Right.
I think it works like something like patina or whatever it's called.
Yeah, it's it's like a skin that keeps the rest of the metal from like uh like suffering the the effects, so like every.
Yeah, they would have to like.
It would get.
I don't know what they do if they have, they probably have to treat like steel and then like what give it a flaming red coat of paint.
Yeah, that's become part of the symbology and and this is that thing that like if you went back through your family tree and you looked at, you know, people who came across the ocean, this, you know, in your family uh in the various branches, you know, that led to your mom and to your dad, um you would say this is what they saw as they were on that boat as they were coming, you know, into uh New York City's harbor if they came after eighteen eighty six. So it i- it is really become kind of a symbol of democracy, of freedom. Uh in Tiananmen Square, uh the Chinese people uh who wanted democracy and freedom built a papier-mache goddess of democracy uh kind of in very similar to the Statue of Liberty, so it really has become this this worldwide symbol of freedom. Probably one of the most famous images of a Roman god or goddess uh that is that is out there. Alright, so that. Yes.
Before we move on, I sent you something to show.
Oh, okay, uh let me find it real fast. How long is it?
It's just, it's just a photo.
Oh, it's just a photo, that's right. I have that pulled up. Hold on a second, I saw that. Um, is it here? Yes, there it is.
This was the time when I went to New York um on a visit with my dance friends and we danced in front of the Statue of Liberty. It was really fun, but um that was just a picture I had that I wanted to show.
Oh, cool, okay, so does everybody see that? Yeah, that is uh that is the Statue of Liberty right there, so uh excellent, excellent. Alright, um, let me roll back over here. Alright, so that takes us, whoa, back up here, to the Haymarket Square Riot, alright. So um in eighteen eighty six, uh the Chicago police were being used by the mayor to help break a strike at the McCormick Harvester Plant in Chicago. That strike was being led by the Knights of Labor. And uh you know, if you know anything about the history of the city of Chicago, it's notoriously corrupt. Um, the uh you know, so the the mayor using his police as strikebreakers is no surprise. But the the police were basically wading through the crowd with billy clubs, beating a path, so to speak, for a bunch of workers who were gonna go into the plant because the workers from the plant had surrounded the plant. And we're gonna make it so nobody else could get in. Um. But the police were gonna beat a path through the crowd and then these workers were just gonna go in and take the jobs of all the striking workers, these new workers. And um so as the police were in the process of of beating, you know, heads and and billy clubbing people, someone threw a bomb. We don't know who it is uh to this day, but the bomb blows up and it kills seven police officers and wounds sixty people. And actually, the primary sources from this are just gut wrenching. There's like all of these primary sources describing the triage places where there's people missing limbs and bleeding and all this stuff. Trying, you know, and then trying people trying to save their lives, etcetera, but the carnage is just unbelievable. And the police are like so like shell shocked when this happens that they return fire, uh killing four striking workers um as well. And just there's just mass blood and chaos, okay? So um this strike turns out to be a disaster, just like the National Labor Union Strike with Great Railroad Strike of eighteen seventy seven. It just it spins out of control and it gets bloody and violent. And it makes the union look bad. Uh now, the police are going to go on like a little vengeance tour thinking that it is anarchists and communists who are the ones who were, you know, cuz throwing the bombs because at this time in history, that is a favorite tactic of little anarchist groups in other countries is they like to throw bombs like um the Tsar of Russia, Alex uh Alexander the Second is killed by a of a bomb being thrown under his carriage. And so um they just go around the city and they just start knocking on the doors of prominent anarchists uh and communists and they just start arresting people. And they're like, people would be like woken up in the middle of the night and there'd be all these police at their door and they'd be like, you're under arrest and they're like, I didn't do anything. I I wasn't even there. And like, you're the one who helped incite and organize this, aren't you? And they'd be like, no, and they and they just arrested him and so um these were known as um uh the Chicago Seven, uh because seven of them were convicted. And um basically, they were being put on trial for murder and so uh four of the seven actually ended up being hanged and three were later pardoned pardoned by later governor, uh John Peter Alged, but um uh and then one of them committed suicide, so that is uh kind of you know, the fallout of of the Haymarket Square Riot, but one of the most significant effects of this, and make sure you have this down, is that public support for the Knights of Labor plummets and people start dropping out of the labor union right and left, and really, this one event will kill the Knights of Labor as as a national labor union. Yeah, Dylan, go ahead.
The one that committed suicide, was that because they were after him or just for other reasons?
Uh, no, no, he was in jail when he did it, like he was on death row in jail. Um, and uh you know, they have to, when you're on death row, you have appeals and you can, if once your appeals run out, then they'll hang you. Uh, but you know, some of them, their appeals were running longer than others and he was just on like death row for a long time and just couldn't take it anymore and kill himself. Um, yeah, Dylan, I gotta find you. Oh, there you are, alright. Uh, yeah, uh Scott, go ahead.
There's a few people like realize that they stopped supporting their labor unions and they could be taken advantage of more and more.
Yeah, but again, it was like if this is what labor unions are gonna turn into, if this is what it's all about, you know, if it's all about violence and killing cops and throwing bombs, I don't wanna have anything to do with it kind of thing, you know, and so, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Did they have like other alternatives in the back of their head when they stopped supporting it or were?
It's gonna create a vacuum uh for another union to emerge, which is gonna actually be a very smart union in the way it does things to prevent this kind of stuff from happening, but really, you have to say about the Knights of Labor, like they basically just let too many radical people into their union, like to have one of your union members kill cops, that's that's a bad thing, so if they hadn't let in the violent anarchists and communists, etcetera, then maybe this wouldn't have happened and maybe things would have been much different, but really, they um their inclusivity turned out to be their Achilles' heel and um uh unfortunately, some some members of their organization made the whole organization look horrible, look look terrible to the public. And of course, um many of their members just decided they didn't wanna be a part of it anymore after that, so this really do kind of destroys their union. Um, and to answer your question, uh Scott, this the there is going to be an alternative that is going to emerge. So um in the power vacuum and in labor, because there has to be somebody uh that is gonna stand up for workers' rights. There's another labor leader that emerges named Samuel Gompers. Samuel Gomper says, okay, here's what I'm proposing. I am proposing a different kind of labor union. First of all, we're not gonna represent factory workers. Okay, we're only gonna represent people in skilled artisan trades. So you have to be what's called a skilled laborer. So can anybody tell me what would a skilled laborer be in comparison to a factory worker? What is a skilled laborer? Yes, Ethan.
A skilled laborer is basically a person who has to have some sort of cert- certification or skills that normal people don't have to do like a certain trade like woodworking or metalworking or types of trades where you need a set of skills.
A carpenter is a skilled laborer, right?
Yes.
A plumber is a skilled laborer cuz you have to know how to do a whole bunch of things, right? You you're a tradesman, you know a trade. A bricklayer is a skilled laborer, a blacksmith is a skilled laborer. And as we get into the age of electricity and electrician is a skilled laborer, we still have these 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 uh trades even today. Um, and so um basically, he has little local um labor unions where where a like someone who knows the trade will take on apprentices. Those apprentices will learn the trade from them and then eventually be able to charge the rates that they charge. And um he says to big business, look, we don't want to wreck the whole system and change everything, okay? All we want are small incremental changes. In other words, we're not trying to like upend capitalism or, you know, create massive changes all at once like the Knights of Labor was. We just want small increments, just a slightly bit better pay, slightly less working hours and lo- lo- big business at the time, you know, realizing that labor organization is inevitable and it's just something that was a part of being in America, it's just it's just part of the system. They're like, you know what? Why not just accept this, this kind of labor union? Because this we can live with, like this is not a threat, like we're still gonna make our big profit margins, we're still gonna get what we want. We might have to to adjust things just a little bit in favor of the workers, but eh, you know, it's not a huge deal, like it just it's just enough to keep them happy. Good, good, we'll do it. Um, and so um he is able to create a labor union because all of these little locals all basically kind of join together and they form this one giant umbrella um organization called the American Federation of Labor. Um, and now he has a labor union where people aren't gonna get blacklisted. Everybody accepts the fact that they're there, they accept them, they're willing, you know, and they can strike for small things and and it's like an acceptable amount of um, you know, dissent between labor and big business without it getting too crazy and um the um uh the labor unions uh, you know, they're they're going to uh have to find a way to get involved politically, okay, so um Gompers and the AFL, they're like, well, which party would be the best party to go to? Like anybody, um right now, at this time in history, which party is the more appealing party to go to that isn't as beholden to big business uh and and corruption, etcetera, Ethan?
Would be Democrats.
Democrats, yeah, they're not, they're they're running Grover Cleveland. Grover Cleveland is like one of the most honest presidents we've ever had. Uh, and so um the Democrats inherit the mantle of labor as Gompers and the AFL begin to quote punish their enemies and reward their friends, like they're having all the people in their unions vote in favor of so and so and against so and so as a way of getting in people who will do what they want. Um, and so the the labor, you know, movement really starts to kind of become an established part of American, the m- the American business landscape and it's not as scary and it's not as revolutionary and it's not as insane as it was before. Um, and by nineteen oh four, the AFL will have one point seven million members and that's without all of those factory workers. Uh, so um that's that's kind of the new face of labor and, you know, that really kind of takes us full circle in terms of um, you know, that whole conflict. Now, um we already talked about the Grange, but there was another farmers' group of national prominence um called the National Farmers Alliance. Uh, another populist movement, um you know, part of that that populism trend that we've been talking about, so is so is labor. Um, and uh basically, they uh instead of focusing solely on political action, which is you know, what the Grange really did, they also said, hey, let's try to reduce our own costs in farming by creating um places where we can buy things uh at wholesale prices called co-ops. And so farmers' co-ops really are born as a result of the um Farmers Alliance and another uh uh organization which kind of followed a similar pattern called the agricultural wheel. And then and then in the South, there was a very powerful branch of this called the Southern Farmers Alliance. And so they they are going to become politically involved and they're gonna lobby for ending futures trading which really messes with the price of various commodities like corn and and wheat, etcetera. And um uh and really just kind of pushing for things that benefit farmers. Uh, uh, so that becomes part of the American political landscape as well, and Ethan, did you have a question?
Is this uh where pushes for subsidization of farming crops or is that later?
That's later, um and we'll see that as we get further into the twenties, but um in, you know, it's gonna be something that is going to be. it's gonna be something that is going to be um a way to stabilize grain prices, because that's the real problem that farmers have is. You know, like one year, there might not be enough wheat being grown and the price of wheat will be really sky high. And everybody who grows it is just gonna be making tons of money per bushel. But then the next year, you know, everybody might pile in and grow wheat. And there'll be so much wheat on the market that it'll flood the market and supply and demand wise, the price of wheat will be super low and they'll be like, I literally can't pay my mortgage. There's like, I I, you know, like, I don't have enough money. And so this wild fluctuation because of supply and demand and there's just like all kinds of factors that that go into that. Um they they want the government to stabilize. So like the there they would, the government would pay subsidies to try to like stabilize the 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 price. So the price stays relatively, instead of being like up and down, up and down, it'd be kind of relatively even. That is gonna be born out of kind of the populist pressure on um these uh uh on the federal government. Well, that's not until the populists kind of merge into one of the big, big uh political parties. So um we'll get beginning to that in just a little bit. Uh all right, the last free Native American leader who fought the US government was an Apache leader named Geronimo. Um and uh basically, he had um uh been the leader of a band of Chiricahua Apache and had actually been famous earlier on uh for his um dangerous exploits, where he had fought both uh Mexicans and Americans. Uh but he had basically agreed to go to a reservation and he was on the Turkey Creek Reservation um uh down in um uh uh New Mexico and Arizona range uh air area. And then he had been forced to move to the San Carlos re- reservation in New Mexico. And um there was a medicine man who was killed on this reservation. It wasn't a very great, the the reservation was kind of garbage. And um so uh the fact that they didn't like this new reservation, plus the fact that this medicine man had been killed caused Geronimo and his band of Apache warriors to basically leave the reservation. And when that happens, the US military is is like on high alert, because you know, they don't want the the mega Native American army ever forming again. And so um he he basically leads his followers up into the Sierra Madre Mountains. Those that mountain range that kind of, you know, goes up through northern Mexico and into uh parts of the American West. And um the these guys are just amazing at guerrilla warfare. They'll just appear out of nowhere, um kill a bunch of whites, disappear. And the soldiers can never find them. They 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 pursued them, but the the Apache knew the the terrain really well. And um one fourth of the US Army, five thousand soldiers, was just chasing Geronimo around fruitlessly forever. And finally, um he uh surrenders to um General Nelson Miles. When General Miles said, okay, there's only one guy in my entire outfit that that Geronimo has any respect for is this officer from. He's like, you know, from Virginia and he's got this long kind of, you know, history as a warrior himself. And um I'm just gonna send this one guy out there to offer Geronimo kind of this final deal, you know, in terms of reservation and all this. And um and so this one guy just goes out there on his own to find Geronimo, makes him the offer and Geronimo decides that he is done killing the white eye, is what he calls it. Um and uh he and his tribe end up going to um a reservation in Florida. And then they're gonna be relocated to Alabama and then finally to Oklahoma. And uh we actually have a a great primary source for all of this. Geronimo himself will dictate his life story in nineteen oh five. Yes, Ethan, go ahead.
So is the phrase Geronimo used because of how sneaky he was, like, you know, when he jumped down a hole or something like that?
It's a good question. Um you know, it's like uh when they, maybe it's because of the surprise attack, you know, kind of thing.
I'm guessing how he could like disappear at a moment's notice.
Geronimo.
Like jumping off cliffs, like saying he would have to do so risky and daring things to make weird escapes.
I have no idea, to be honest, but um yeah, it it's, who knows? Who knows? Uh yeah, it's all very interesting. I I have no idea why people use that phrase when they jump off of things. Um there may be a book that was written or a movie that was done that that it kind of inspired that, but uh um I have not researched that, so good question. All right. That takes us over to um a uh a very important court case. Uh in um eighteen eighty six, uh a a Supreme Court decision is going to radically uh change the regulatory landscape in the country. Um there had been a landmark Supreme Court decision in uh eighteen seventy seven in Mundy, Illinois that had said that states could regulate the railroads. And so um states basically to varying degrees would um uh regulate railroads and try to force them to pay or to charge um, you know, rates that were reasonable. And a lot of railroads were like in cutthroat competition with each other, trying to establish geographic monopolies and build, build, build before the other guy can get there. And so um they were, they were basically supporting all of this cutthroat activity by, you know, just jacking up their prices in 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 causing people who were taking the trains to pay these ridiculous fares uh to get from point A to point B. Um so uh states, you know, had been, you know, uh they're under pressure from voters on one side, but then they get all these campaign contribu- contributions from railroad people on the other side. And so they're just kind of caught in the middle. And so, but so some states really do make it more fair and other states don't. Um but um this case uh right here, Wabash Saint Louis and Pacific Railroad, B, Illinois uh was seen as a big victory for the railroads, because in this case, the Supreme Court says, well, actually, Mundy, Illinois is wrong. Uh we're gonna overturn ourselves here and we're gonna say that the um uh the states do not have the right to uh regulate railroads, you know, it's so uneven. It's interstate commerce, that's really the realm of the feds, et cetera. And so um that basically gets rid of all those state laws, which told uh railroads that they couldn't charge, you know, ridiculous monopolistic rates. But what it ends up doing also is it opens the door for the feds to get involved. So um for the first time in American history, uh because of the pressure on members of Congress, they pass a law called the Interstate Commerce Act and send it up to Grover Cleveland and Grover Cleveland signs it into law. And um this act uh passed in eighteen eighty seven says that railroads have to charge fair market rates for their um for people's fares on on the railroads. And so this is like cheered by the public, because now it's like, oh, thank God, I don't have to pay like triple the amount when I wanna go from New York to Chicago anymore and all this stuff. And you know, for consumers, it was a huge boon, but for the railroad companies, this was an absolute disaster. Uh so of course, they're gonna fight it tooth and nail. Um but they're gonna be slowly drowning as a result of this. So uh because they have all these debt and all of these obligations and all this money that they have to pay. And so they're gonna be trying to, you know, advertise for people to ride their railroads and keep their heads above water financially. And slowly over a period of time, this is going to cause more and more railroads to get closer and closer to bankruptcy. And eventually, they will go bankrupt. So we're gonna come to that when we get to it, but you know, this is gonna be another big financial panic uh coming down the road. But this is the first independent regulatory commission established by the federal government. And of course, this is setting a whole new tone for um the role of the federal government, which before had just been to stay out of things. And now suddenly, they're getting involved. And so we call this part of the progressive movement as a result, because it's part of this movement to fix the excesses of co- of capitalism with federal intervention. Yes, Ethan?
So basically, this is the part where companies are starting to get so big that the federal government starts to basically have more and more control over what businesses in general do.
Yeah, um and and well, and just like, when it comes to interstate commerce, really, that is the realm of the feds. And so uh really
But like, you know, as businesses are getting larger, more of their commerce is interstate.
Right, yeah, exactly. And so and really, if somebody's gonna regulate it and regulate it fairly and have it be even across the country, it's gotta be the feds. And so, yeah.
I'm guessing this is also pressure into, you know, like the Rockefellers trying to pressure into the federal government? Basically, those type of people.
Big business does not like this. This is like a direct threat to Vanderbilt and to a lot of the big railroad.
So then they change their eyes from state to federal from this.
Essentially, yeah. And and so, because the feds had never gotten involved in business up to this point. Like this is, this was like one of those, you know, America's unfettered capitalism, feds stay out of it, that's the realm of the states if they're gonna deal with the X, Y, and Z. But now, for the first time, the feds are just making kind of like these sweeping regulatory changes that all businesses across the entire country have to have to abide by. Um and this is our last, well, we'll see here. In eighteen eighty seven, um a lawyer in Iowa by the name of Henry Bowers, um who is a devout Freemason um founds an anti-Catholic uh organization called the American Protective Association. And because uh as a Mason, he felt like the Catholic Church was an evil organization. He basically uh kind of saw the Pope as this malevolent influence uh who was who was trying to um uh, you know, do America in, so to speak. Uh uh and um so the organization grew in numbers uh when W J H Trainer took over. Um and not just because it fed into the anti-immigrant nativist feelings of the time uh with the wave of new immigration that was coming into the country. And you know, since a lot of these new immigrants uh like the Italians were Catholic, um it really um kind of uh, you know, basically uh feeds into that. So this is just another one of those examples of nativism uh in the reaction to uh people, immigrants coming into the country at the time. Yes, uh Dylan, go ahead.
Oh, what did they do? Like, actions did they take against Catholicism?
They're just a uh grassroots organization that tries to put pressure on um uh politicians to enact anti-immigrant legislation. So really, they're only going to, they're only they're just pushing information, basically, okay? They're just out there informing the public, trying to get, trying to persuade people to their point of view, trying to put pressure on politicians via their members all voting the same way. And they do have a certain amount of success in that. And so some of the nativist stuff that we're gonna be talking about as we get further in is going to be partially because of their influence. Uh Ethan, go ahead.
What's with that little uh sketch in the right corner with the Statue of Liberty and?
Yeah.
What's that right next to it?
That's a um basically a uh a statue where the they're the the they're holding up a cross instead.
Uh that's supposed to represent the Freemason?
It's supposed to represent the way it should be. This is the, it is, this is the way it should.
I'm gonna stop for a second. It's like, oh, it's like the Pope is saying, I thought they were about to get mad at how the
This is, you know, this is the uh um interpretation of the way
It gets kind of confusing when both of them use the same symbols to represent.
Yeah, yeah. Well, again, and it's like, um
Yeah.
Uh, okay, yeah, you're you're Freemasons and you're supposed to be so trying to keep Christianity pure. And yet Freemasonry itself has all these issues that are like, you know.
I'm guessing they took pride in the Statue of Liberty since it's literally building something.
Right, it's like you're saying, well, okay, yeah, uh we're supposed to keep Christianity pure of these Catholic influences. And yet Mason, you know, Freemasonry itself has all of these issues where it contradicts Christianity in in many ways as well. So um so, yeah. So anyway, um and then I think we'll end with this one here. Um so um in eighteen eighty seven, um a law was passed, uh the Dawes Severalty Act of eighteen eighty seven, which took the rather generous uh reservation lands, which had originally been given to natives under Grant's peace policy. Uh and broke them up into little holds of farmland. And they say, okay, you don't need, you should be done hunting by now. You guys should be transitioned over to farming. So you don't need all this land anymore. Uh so we're gonna basically say, okay, every family in your tribe is going to get a plot of farmland, okay? And then that's it. You don't get any more land than that. And then all the rest of the reservation lands are gonna be open to white settlement. And so this is going to dramatically reduce the size of the reservation lands that had once been granted to native tribes. And it is seen as a very negative thing for the Native American people uh of this country. Yes, Ethan?
Did they actually teach the natives how to farm first?
Uh uh the government did, but a lot of Native Americans were not real into it. And um since they were getting the free handouts anyway, they just kind of, you know
Yeah, it kind of feels like, well, you're up for yourself, but wait, you didn't tell, say, sorry, see ya.
Yeah, and really, it's just a way to take land from them. It 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 just reduces the size of reservations dramatically. Uh Eily, go ahead.
Yeah.
I don't wanna interrupt anything, but I need to be somewhere right now.
Okay, we're 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 gonna end pretty quick, so here. So, yeah, you're, feel free. Uh and Scott?
Did did you know that time feel bad for the natives or?
Yeah.
They're just like, get off my lawn.
Yeah, no, there are people who write reports, go before Congress, make speeches, et cetera, white people who are are pretty upset, you know? Uh Helen Hunt Jackson, we already talked about um with Century of Dishonor, but um there are others who will like compile big reports and try to try to get the native um population to be treated better and the the boarding school system, which was very painful for native parents, uh et cetera. So um yeah, there are advocates for them. Yes, Mary?
And they had no control of this land outside of the farms that they were forced into?
Essentially, yeah, they were just like, you know.
They weren't even like allowed to hunt or even
Well, yeah, they're like, you should, you shouldn't be um hunting anymore. Like, you should have transitioned by now. That was the point, was we're gonna, we're gonna give you this big chunk of land, you can kind of hunt on it, but we'll make sure you get food anyway.
Are they still allowed to congregate and meet up?
Oh, yeah, like, it's it's not like where they were, you know, like Gestapo-ing people uh inside of the reservations or anything. It was more just, it was more like the size of the reservation is is dramatically reduced um as as, you know. And then, of course, some Native Americans would, you know, end up making terrible decisions with this land they've been given. You know, because they had a a deed, a title to their land, uh which was something of value, but some of them would would gamble with it and like lose. And then like their entire farm, family farm would be gone. Um and some other person, usually a white person, would get control of it. And um, you know, so that would, that reduced the size of the reservations even further. And of course, this is something that will be reversed to a certain extent as we get into the twenties and thirties. Um but uh the Dawes Severalty Act does a tremendous amount of damage to the reservation. Uh the sizes of reservation, the reservation system, so. Um, yeah, and i- it's a, it's a land grab, is what it is. It, that's exactly what it is, so. All right, thank you, everybody, for uh paying close attention today and we will pick up from here when I see you on Tuesday. Have a great rest of your weekend.